Good evening, and welcome to the King Philip School Committee meeting of September eleventh. We are coming to you from the middle school, I suspect, hopefully the last time, Mr. [inaudible]. Will we be in high school next time?
We'll find out later.
We have a number of guests here this evening, which we're always pleased to have. Of course, Dr. Gourmet is with us, Dr. Gilson is with us, Mr. Azar, I say Debbie Baxter, Mr. Boyce, Ms. Loy, Ms. Pettit, Ms. Snead is who is always present at these meetings, Mr. Jane, and I believe we have a guest with us this evening who will be speaking with us later, Gillian Camau, wonderful to have you with us. If I could ask you just for a moment, this being an unusual day in our memories of September eleventh, if you would just join me in a moment of silence for over three thousand lives that were lost twenty-two years ago today. Thank you very much. Let me do a roll call of this committee if I may, starting with this one.
Ms. Alzoff-Pendel.
Mark Blackson.
Jim Leahan-Norford.
Bruce Case-Pendel, I want to recognize Mr. Joe Cronin, who is a bedroom. So, thank you.
Eric Carmen-Melfol.
Eric Green-Michael.
Joe Cronin.
Thank you very much. Indeed, we do not have any other comments this evening, is that right? Moving on to the consent agenda, we have payment of warrants which are circulating, I hope, somewhere. And I guess, I believe there are any other communications left. They had a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to, we have no executive minutes that I'm aware of, so we'll pass on that. We're going to, with your indulgence, we're going to move up the request from the band overnight field trip to this point in the agenda, if everyone is agreeable with that, so these folks can get on to a different meeting this evening, so. Dr. Gourmet, I will bring it to you, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Wall, you might just come in and give an brief overview of the trip, and then we'll look for a group, uh, motion for approval.
A very similar trip that we've been doing for the past thirty years. Instead of going to New Jersey, to MetLife Stadium for U.S. bands, this year we'll be going to Rutgers University for Bands of America Regional on the weekend of October twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth. We'll bring the kids to New Jersey, stay over, perform very early on the twenty-eighth at about eight-thirty in the morning. Songs rehearsal will be right in there. Then we will find out if we make finals. In between that, we are getting some space at Highland Park High School that is pending their approval. And after the finals performance, we'll stay up one more day, and on our way home on Sunday, we'll stop off in New York and do a Broadway show, as we've typically done over the years. Cost of the program is through the fees, which were approved at the end of last year's school year. So yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that I may not have answered in my short description of the trip.
Anyone have any questions? So, for on the record?
Yep.
If you don't mind.
Not at all.
So we have the appropriate picture to, or adult to student ratio?
Yeah, we'll have the staff of the marching men that will travel on the trip, and there'll be a list of chaperones that will be poured, and I'll present that to our, Mr. Azar, to have those approved for that trip.
Thank you.
Good.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
As always, thank you very much for your support, we appreciate it.
Always nice to see you.
Thank you for pivoting for me, I appreciate that. Good night.
Mr. Case would like me to ask if there was anyone important to ask. Seeing none, it wasn't, it was the unanimous vote, so I did not miss that question.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to coach the junior.
It is working progress.
The junior, you know.
Moving forward. Uh, we had now the reports and recommendations from the superintendent, Dr. Gourmet, which is yours, sir.
Thank you. Actually, if you don't mind, we'll go back and I'll let Gillian go first for this council report.
My vice chair got me all worked up, and I lost track of the agenda. Gillian, it is nice to have you with us, thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Gillian Camau, I'm our student council co-president, I'm a senior at KP, and I'm from Plankville. Last week, we all started school faculty and students, and we also had a fire drill at nine thirty on Friday. It seemed to go very well, and the first week went smoothly for all the students. Sports are also up in swing, as many teams had their first games last week. The first football game was on Friday, it was a green and gold spirit day. And volleyball and field hockey had a very good matchday with Franklin, so I absolutely like it. And entrance to all football games are now electronic, they buy their tickets online, it's the same price, and they show their ticket at the door, and teachers check it off, and they're allowed to go in. The class of twenty-twenty-five had a lot of things going on over the past weekend, they had a college on Saturday, September ninth, and the bus was to be sent for a possible senior trip. They also raised the funders united up in Air Bud and Plankville. From what I've heard, they've opened a very successful dance, and everyone helped out, it was great, I appreciate it. KP cares had a pregame study on Friday, September eighth before the football game. They had various jerk games, both students in fact, we had a great time before the game started getting to each other. They will also have a flow at the Rhythm Three Fifty Parade on September sixteenth. A lot of the clubs and organizations people probably helped out there, and there'll be a lot of volunteers helping the flow into the display and showcase everything the school's done. Student Council has a spirit day on September eighth, which was the flag, green and gold for the game and for fifth inning, to support the football team. We also, KP cares and student council decorated the school to welcome all new students, green and gold as well. And there were students that volunteered on North Oak Day on the Saturday, they ate a pizza with people. Healthy KP held their fifth quarter event, which they had last year, which included a playful obstacle course, a dunk tank, photo booth, music, and other attractions such as crafting, cornrows, bike wall, cane jam, balloon, and ski ball, burgers, hot dog, cotton candy, and snow cones were offered to students. It was a huge day and a great opportunity for new students to meet each other, and for the freshmen to have a chance to go to different events after the game. That's about all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I always love your reports.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Who's next, Mr. Case?
Chairman.
All right, and thanks, Gillian, I was impressed with how we looked down. So thank you very much, I'd like to start the superintendent's update this week by highlighting one of our students. So, in my superintendent's update, which I'll share with you in a minute, there was a panel of presenters at Harvard Graduate Schools, there was a presentation with a panel of presenters, and our high school student Laksh Jane, last Wednesday, so Dr. Gilson and I watched, and some other staff members, which we shared the link with them, we watched Laksh take part in the virtual presentation sponsored by Harvard Graduate Schools Education Now series. His session focused on how artificial intelligence can be used in education in a positive way. And so, you know, can AI actually increase opportunities for creativity and imagination in our classrooms for both students and teachers? Laksh is deeply passionate about AI and entrepreneurship, he's considering majoring in applied mathematics. His top schools are MIT, Harvard, Yale, and Stanford, and this summer he interned at the MIT Lincoln Laboratory. And during this six-week program, he conducted research in computer networks, wireless communications, and autonomous systems, artificial intelligence within the tactical networks division. And Dr. Gilson and I again attended Wednesday, and I was really impressed with how Laksh talked about using ChatGPT as an editor to help with his writing, because I think, one thing I learned is there's a misperception that it's just for cheating or cutting corners. He talked about how he used it to help his writing, and he talked about input versus output, and how the prompts that you give it, how quality the prompt is, relates to the quality of information that it gives to you. The panel also addressed how AI will never replace human beings, as human beings can do things AI can't, like motivating, modeling, and inspiring. And most, so anyway, Laksh talked about using it for greater purposes, and it was so impressive. And through Dr. Gilson, she had spoken to Laksh, and we're hoping once a meeting, or once every other meeting, we could have a student chair. So that'll further ado, I'll turn it over to you to give a brief overview of your presentation.
So, hi, everybody, I'll be talking a little bit about ChatGPT in the classroom and what's going on with it. So, I mean, this is just a basic overview of ChatGPT, it's a language learning model, and it was launched last year by OpenAI, and it's a text-based AI model. So basically, it's a chatbot, you write questions, or you give it a prompt, and then it gives you an output, and based on the prompt. And at its core, it's a language model, which means that it's trained to talk like a human. So you're supposed to, you put a natural prompt, it's not like Google, or like, I guess, when you're, um, yeah, it's not like Google, like you put in a natural prompt, and it gives you an output that sounds like a human. And it often aims for accuracy, but sometimes it can be false, and it can be incorrect or misleading, because it does not have the proper context or the proper information. So, I mean, these are some of the ways I've used ChatGPT. The main way is mostly as an editor, like you mentioned, and I often use it to edit my essays, articles, lab reports, or even check over email drafts or social media posts. And often for the prompt, I stay, act as an editor for the New York Times, or I input my rubric for the essay or the lab report, and it gives me an output of how I can make my lab report or essay better, and what is wrong with my writing. And that way, I can ensure that my writing is almost close to perfect. And another way I've used it is to code, it's really good at coding and solving issues and debugging, but many times, like I mentioned before, you can't solve a problem, but it often points me to the right direction, which can help me troubleshoot it, and it does a better job than Google. And another way is teaching, so last year I often struggled in chemistry. So one way I used it was I would input chemistry problems that I didn't understand, it would solve them. And then I would ask it to expand upon one specific step, and then it would explain that step in detail. So that way, I could understand chemistry better and solve complex problems chem. So with my interest in ChatGPT, I've been experimenting with it over the year. I asked Boston Globe to write an opinion piece, and thankfully, I'm honored to be published in the Boston Globe. And in the article, I advocated for the responsible integration of AI tools like ChatGPT in education. So I didn't want schools to ban the technology, because the technology is going to be there in our future, so our students need to be prepared for it. So instead of banning the technology, I believe that we should embrace it and learn literacy and ethical use. Through the article, I was contacted by Harvard, and I spoke at Harvard on AI. And in the panel, we advised educators to experiment with this technology, so they could understand its positives and negatives. And yeah, these are my key takeaways from the past year of experimenting with this technology. And I believe that everybody else should also experiment with this technology, I think that's the best way to learn, rather than reading an article on it, I think everybody should get on it, try different prompts, try putting homework problems in their assignments, and seeing how it's responding. And maybe how you can make your homework better, so it's not solvable by ChatGPT, I guess. And I think in schools, we should be emphasizing projects and greater discussions more, rather than just essays or problem sets, because, I mean, cheating is very easy, and it's a big problem in our schools. And I think ChatGPT, it doesn't make cheating more prevalent, it makes it easier to cheat. Even before, we had tools like Google Quizlet, Spark Notes, it's easy to cheat, but ChatGPT makes it a lot easier to cheat. So that's why I think we should emphasize projects and greater discussions, and it will better prepare our students for the new world. And I think we should also teach AI literacy, bias and misinformation. So ChatGPT is trained in outdated data set, if you ask it about what happened in twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three, it does not have any info on it, because the data it was trained on is only up to twenty-twenty-one. So many times, it just creates false information, so if you ask it about, oh, what happened last week in the news, it might just create something, and people might use it as a fact. So we need to ensure that everybody that uses this technology knows that it's not right most of the time. And we also need to be, I think, wary of AI detectors. These days, you see a lot of companies coming out with technology that say they can detect AI-generated texts, but they often don't work, so I recommend everybody to be wary. Any questions?
I do. Looking at that first bullet you have up there, where you talk about inputting homework problems, and you had another slide, I believe, you talked about solving some, I think it was chemistry or whatever. Tell me a little bit more about that process, I mean, does it prompt you on how to think through the problem?
Yeah, so basically, I say, in the prompt, I state that I'm in this class, I'm struggling answering this question. Can you go in step-by-step detail on how to solve this problem? And then I copy and paste the problem, and then it gives an output of a response, so it starts off step one, like balance the equation, step two, add the coefficients, whatnot, and then it goes into detail. And then, let's say I don't understand step two, I put into the prompt, okay, can you expand upon step two? I do not, I still don't understand it, and then it gives a more detailed output, expanding upon step two.
So if it doesn't actually solve the problem, per se, it provides a critical thinking process to solve the problem?
It will solve the problem.
It will solve.
Yeah, but if you don't want it to solve it, you would have to state that explicitly, you would have to say, give me a hint, don't solve the problem.
It, it, it solves the problem, and you want to understand how it solved the problem. What if I'm a little bit more, less dense, you know, and I just wanted the answer? Would that get me to the answer, and I don't have to understand how it got there?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so, I mean, that.
Yes.
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, that's an issue, so you could just say, okay, can you give me the answer to this problem? Copy and paste the problem, and I'll give you an answer. But there's two issues with that, one thing is that, like I said, ChatGPT is not that, it's, it's not that strong at computations, computations, so like if you put in an algebra two level problem, or a calculus level problem, it'll get the right steps, but it won't be able to solve it right. And because, I don't know, it's just the technical side of it, it's not able to do computations really well. So if you put in the same problem multiple times, fifty percent of the time, it gives you the wrong answer. But it gives you the right steps to solve it. So I think that way, that's one of the major issues with it, and another thing is that often you can copy and paste homework problems online into Google, and that gives you the answer ninety percent of the time. So, it's not really.
It's sort of sad that I'm asking. It sort of sounds, it sounds like a classic, it's, particularly sometime we were wrong. It was fascinating, because in the panel, you talked about how, yes, it can get you answers, but if it can be used as a tool, like a tutor, or the, you know, to think about why you're using it besides cheating, and learning from it, and as in education, we're often behind with technology, trying to catch up. And so you had some good recommendations for teachers too, about, you know, rather than just, you know, right and wrong, problem sets or answers, or to do different types of classroom settings.
Yeah, and I also forgot to mention one thing, so with ChatGPT, there's, there's the normal version, which you can sign up for and use, but then there's also a premium version, which is, I think, twenty dollars a month. And that is, that's a lot smarter, so the normal version, I would say, is like, like a ninth grade level, and in terms of education, like, I think they did a test, and it scored around a twelve-hundred on the SAT. But the premium version, that uses a more updated model, it's the same information, but it's just stronger. And that has, that's like a college level, it has an SAT score of like fifteen-ten. So that one is a lot smarter, so that can do, handle computations better, so that's another thing to consider.
If you haven't had a chance to play around with it, it's worth it. So for example, just playing around with it, last year I did, wrote a, wrote a letter of recommendation for a high school chemistry teacher, you know, someone, as people ask for letters of recommendation. It's quite amazing what it, what it comes up with, so, but anyway, thank you so much. Does anyone else have any questions? Anyone? I know, I'm sorry. Quick. Mr. Boyce is our tech director.
For the record, the stuff he has summarized here, each bullet, and even concepts within the bullets, people could write entire dissertations about, so he's done a really wonderful job here, really summarizing this. But the topic is extremely vast, and as you highly discussed earlier, there's a lot of information here. And you did a wonderful job summarizing.
Thank you so much.
Well, the question is, did you use ChatGPT?
I didn't.
Why didn't you?
So I did use it to write part of this slide, the first slide, right? Because, I mean, I, I've been using the technology for the past year, so I'm really aware of it, but I know that many people are not aware of it, so I was like, okay, I'm creating a presentation for the, for an audience on ChatGPT, can you give me just like ten bullet points on an introduction of what it is? And it gave me ten bullet points, I took, I think, three of them, I took this one, and these two from it, so that, it gives a basic overview, and yeah, that's one of the ways I used it. But for the rest of the slide, I didn't, and I did try to use it, but like, if I go, like, it wouldn't allow, it would not, let me say this, it would not state this, right, because it's not going to say that it can't solve problems, right? Like, it's biased in that way, right? And also, for this, it would say that's just cheating, so it won't, it won't say that, even for this, so that's why you can't use it for a lot of things.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I have a question, I just want to say congratulations on your presentation, and that you got to present, that's quite an honor, so congratulations.
And.
It's intriguing.
And.
It's intriguing, you're going to give this presentation to Harvard?
Huh?
To Harvard?
I did it last week.
Last week? Fantastic.
Uh, that is incredible, you should be very proud, and we're very proud of you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. So just moving on with the superintendent's update. Great, good chat.
Hard to say.
It's only ever that easy.
Everything.
That's a good idea. Well, my, my first thing, I'll talk about meeting with the Norfolk PD Department. When I put that in, it didn't spit out the surface dog, Mitch, so those are, you know, personalized things that get to me. But no, I'll just, on August twenty-ninth, I met with our middle school school resource officer, Katie Appel, Norfolk Police Chief Tim Hines, Deputy Police Chief Michelle Palladini, Lieutenant Eric Vinesk, and Harper, the Norfolk Fire Department's comfort dog, and Mitch, the Norfolk Police Department's comfort dog. Last week also, I signed an MOU outlining our agreement regarding the school resource officer between the King Philip Regional School District and the Norfolk-Plankville Police Department. Additions for this year, but are not included to, it's more collaboration between the three town SROs at the middle and high school level, and updates on who the SRO directly reports to in each town's respective police department. Next, I wanted to share an update on the high school library construction. We're hopeful to open the renovated high school library next week, the week of September eighteenth. I'll keep you posted if the next school committee meeting will need to meet here again, or hopefully not, hopefully we can meet on the twenty-fifth at the high school. I'm going to ask Mr. Azar to give a little bit more detailed update.
Sure, thanks. So, the library is probably ninety-five percent done, if you were to go in here. All the flooring, the door frames, the windows are in place, the electrical systems are all installed, rough inspection is passed, the final inspection should be this week, all HVAC systems are complete, operated properly, fire alarm sprinklers all done, the doors for the classrooms and the offices are coming in this week, and should be installed then. The, I'll go with the partitions that are going between the classrooms, that are, can fold in and out to create bigger classrooms, if you don't look through the presentations. Those should be in, of course, the end of the month, there's a longer lead time on those. And they're also going to have whiteboards written on the walls, because, on, secondly, on each section of the folding, because the wall fold, we can't put a traditional whiteboard on the wall. But each section of the folded wall will have its own whiteboard section, so that when the wall is fully closed, adjusted, or fully expanded, I guess, you know, to separate the rooms, you'll have a whole whiteboard out there that the teacher can use to write on. Uh, we, our architect came in this morning and put together a punch list of all the, you know, just the minor things that need to get taken care, so it's, Tuesday, next week, and like, as it said, the goal is to open up the business, hopefully next Monday, if not, certainly sometime next week. And Miss Roa has been having her small classes, despite the circulation desk in there. That's the one area that has been approved for use, but the rest of the library, not yet. We're just waiting for those final small pieces. Like I said, we're waiting with anticipation, a little less, we're working for the summer, we're meeting, we're constructing, we've seen the progress. So when you're there, you'll see it, we'll, very much looking forward to showing it off, and have you see it in a couple of weeks.
I have a blurb in here about this year, I try to, I'm going to try to attend at least one home varsity sports game for each sport, played on our green and gold team, home teams, Friday. I got to see our football team take on Wolfhold, it was a great outcome. I want to thank the KP cares for the tailgate meet and greet they had, also the fifth quarter event, sponsored by Healthy KP Coalition, was very well attended, there were lots of kids after, as Julie mentioned, that event, so that was, that was awesome as well. Next, as a reminder, Anne Marie from MASC, let Ms. Pettit know. A state alderfire school committee members take the chart on the course within one year of their election or appointment. Please see Ms. Pettit, if you're not sure whether or not you need to take it within the next year. There's a link there as well. And I'll just give an overview, and then I'll ask Ms. Moy to give a little bit more detail. As you know, last Tuesday, I was informed by DESI that some migrant youth and families moved into a couple shelters in Plankville over the late grade weekend with their families. DESI has some procedures and protocols in place for this sort of situation, and we are ready to welcome these students. We strive to create a learning environment, welcoming sort of feels a sense of belonging. I've been really impressed and proud to be the new superintendent here. Only minutes after I made this announcement, a number of families and staff reached out to see how they could support these new students and their families. I included a link, which I just sent to you electronically, which is a reminder on homeless student guidance from DESI during a state of emergency. Also, as you know, I believe on August eighth, Governor Haley declared a state of emergency due to rapidly rising number of migrant families right here in Massachusetts in need of shelter and services, coupled by a lack of shelter availability in the state. There's DESI guidance, I also provided to you electronically, if you want to look at the state of emergency and the impact on school districts, newcomer resource supports for school districts, and homeless student support, and supplemental funding, which will be made available to us. We had the, the pleasure of going to one of the shelters today, and I want to thank Ms. Moy for kind of leading and coordinating the effort here, and I'm going to ask Ms. Moy to just give a little bit more information. And then by tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest, I'll share more information with the community about the students joining us, probably this Thursday or Friday.
You still know my name?
Sorry.
Right, as Dr. Drily said, we went today, it was great, I had a team go with me, so, and then, Mr. Boyce, he came along with me, as part of the team, we had Dr. Teresa Sports, who is fluent in Portuguese, which came in very beginning today. I had Luda Chichester, one of our school adjustment counselors, attend as well, and Director of Wellness, Doc Carl. I had Luda Chichester, one of our school adjustment counselors, attend as well, and Director Wellness Doc Carl. Uh, so there's a great team of us there. The kiddos were really excited and some of them wanted to really get back into school. Some, I'm not so sure, but they really, a few were, I haven't been in school. So I was surprised with the number of different uh, languages from around the countries that we have right now. So they're from Brazil, they're from Haiti, Central America. So we have many different countries represented, many different languages. We had some students speaking Dutch, Portuguese, Spanish, Haitian Creole. Um, so um, I was prepared with Haitian Creole and I was prepared for the Spanish, but then I got thrown a little bit for a couple of other languages, which was, was kinda fun. So we had maybe a dozen students for KP right now that we're looking at for enrollment. Uh, because the students are living in a shelter under the Canadian mental law, they are, have to be placed in the schools as soon as possible. Uh, and they can be placed without any records or documentation from their homeland or from their former schools. So we have to do that as soon as possible. So that's what we were doing there today, was trying to register, talking with the students, the families, sharing a little background information of what was school like? Did they go to school? Did they like school? Favorite sports, interests, so we can try and help get them successfully enrolled in school. We're hoping for the end of the week, having them enrolled. And we're talking about possibly seeing if we can get them to come for a tour before they actually are enrolled.
I also had a, uh, a meeting with the Plainville Town Administration with all the department heads today. And the information coming out through the town of Plainville as they'll be coordinating e- efforts for anyone who wants to assist the families with things like clothing and food. There'll be information coming out before the end of the week from uh, Plainville about how to do that as well. And I'll be able to share that with people who have reached out.
So how many are we flipping that?
Well, today, we are looking at eight to ten students, which could, you know, could go up. There's still empty hotel rooms and everything, but eight to ten students as of now between the middle school and high school.
Okay, thank you. And do we anticipate those are high needs or low needs or?
Regular kids that speak different languages.
They'll speak English too.
Yeah, uh, some, some kids were raised, some of the teenagers were acting as translators, helping out their parents and us with uh, with information.
That's why I'm kind of immigrated here from Kentucky.
Um, and then uh, two more things, uh, just wanted to share a picture. I got to visit, uh, on behalf of the school committee, um, Miss Nerlino, the semifinalist from Massachusetts Teacher of the Year. We had had her plaque left over from the last meeting, so I visited her. Uh, and she happened to have a class of seniors, there's a picture, see if you can find her there with the students. Cause she looks, just blends in with the students, holding the plaque. And uh, so that was exciting and she was grateful. And then I did wanna also um, ask uh, Mr. Boyce first, Director of Technology is here to give an update. And then our two school principals, um, Miss, Miss Cruiser and Miss Bodily, just to give a brief update as well on successful opening of the school year, but uh, Mr. Boyce, if you wanna go first?
So a couple of things that were different this year, um, the middle school started doing online registration a couple of years ago. Uh, we found that we struggled throughout the summer to gotta capture all the incoming grades, um, all the incoming students. This year, we started a lot earlier and that proved tremendously successful. So we had far fewer students showing up on day one without being registered and scheduled. So that was a great change, we'll probably continue that again next year. We did, um, start offering Chromebooks to our teachers this year. We've tried to offer them in the past and they weren't really too thrilled about the idea. This year, um, now that the teachers have begun embracing Google more, they're more receptive to using a Chromebook. And this is really beneficial to our department, cause then it's gonna start setting us on the certain surfaces that we've cut back on. Um, so I'm really excited about that. Chromebook distribution to our seventh graders, so we did this later than usual due to actually receiving equipment. Hopefully isn't actually getting out where we're in, ended up doing it later in the summer. Turns out that was a really good idea for us. Um, in the past, we've done the distribution earlier in the summer and we don't get all the kids. I think we've only gotten, um, I think sixty to seventy percent. And then on the first day of school, we're running around trying to get all the kids. This year, we did it, eight more school students, I think. Um, and we got close to ninety percent of the kids. So on day one, that was significantly difficult to run and try to get Chromebooks to. So we'll have to look at that again for next year. New staff orientation this year, we have our, um, so each school has a stipend, which is for a teacher to become subject of instructional technology. Um, and the middle school teacher showed up to the new staff orientation and did some how-tos. And it turned out that this was really, really helpful. Having a teacher teach another teacher is far more beneficial than having one of the techs teach them. We can show them how to use a tool, but a teacher can show them how to use it to educate. So there's a big difference between having a teacher that helps, so that was very well received. So we're definitely gonna stick with that, um, and try to expand on that a little bit more. I wanna give a big thank you to my tech team. They were short-staffed this year, we had a lot of turnover in that department. Um, and we still haven't filled one of the tech positions. And yet, our opening day was tremendously successful. We had very few issues. Most of the classroom's already set up, ready to go. And what I was gonna say, they took care of pretty much on day one. So it was a very successful opening for us and very proud of my team and especially to do it on a short handed. They did an excellent job. One issue we did have this year was with IC. I'm not sure if any of you noticed it, but IC went down multiple times on the first two days of school. Huge drops to seventeen, so bowling with punches and having paper printed out, symbols. Um, IC has responded by saying that they're having network issues and bandwidth issues and they've increased both their bandwidth and their internal network. And they're not expecting this anymore. We'll have to reconceive this after. But um, since then, all day today, it's been fine, we haven't seen any issues, it's fine all weekend. So I'm very hopeful with that as a result. And then the only other issue I wanted to share with you is, we did have an issue at state reporting time this year. There are a multitude of reports that got submitted to see it in the school year. If any of you have looked at our online profile on the DESI website, there's a full lot of data there. Basically tells the public everything about our district, so all our numbers. We got a lot of reports submitted. There's a final step that happens with the list of courses and our um, key PMS data, which is the staff information. They do a cross-check after all that's submitted. And this helps us find other problems with the data that then needs to be resolved before the final data is published on the site. We weren't able to reach that step, so they accepted the data as it is. So the potential problems with that could be, um, some slightly skewed numbers or things like our AP course count, um, class, uh, things of that nature. We've tried to look at the data to try to anticipate what those problems could be. Uh, it's not very easy to do. So we probably don't know what we're looking at until the data's actually released and then we'll have to look at it. Dr. Druley and I met with the representative from DESI. He was pointing out that our reports got accepted without errors. So the likelihood is that the amount of error is very small. But again, we'll have to sort of, that data comes out. So I have other questions?
Sure, just entering into the realm of we reported the wrong uh, members for uh, the sports and we can't get back to that, so now, and we reported something wrong here.
So the sports one, I can't know much, just cause I don't know.
This one was, did it have any issues with enrollment or if it was?
Uh, I'm more like, it's, it, we reported something that we can't get back.
No.
So what, what do you mean?
So, um, it, it's, so, on the sports side, we said, we had twelve of these students. We had eleven hundred. Uh, and so we're in division one.
Yeah.
Division two. So we're reporting here, it sounds like we haven't, really, decided that, we, we haven't?
They assured us that it wouldn't impact enrollment and funding and anything of that nature. The impact might be when it ties with uh, teacher data to course, to course information. So the example they gave is, you know, maybe it, uh, AP, the number of AP courses that we ran. But when the data didn't roll properly, it might show up different. But they assured us that, why would it impact on anything like enrollment? Because we asked that specifically, is that ties into funding and other things? I think what you're referencing is something totally different that was with MIAA and not DESI.
Yes. Hey, real quick, just a question now, I wanna look at the, so all three reports, the, the reports themselves all got submitted without errors. So there's a step after that where they take two of their parts, the course list and teacher information. And the system does what's called cross-validation on that to make sure of certain things. I can't tell you what that is, it all happens on, on their end in their system. But what, what does come back to us is errors. And it'll say that this doesn't match this, you need to fix it. Now, because we weren't able to do that step, um, that's where some inconsistencies can come. And so some of the examples we gave was, it was like I said, the, um, the automated AP courses that we offered, uh, may be slightly off. So like advanced course completion, which is your AP courses, our digital literacy count, um, so like our computer science classes, things like that. So class counts and things of that future may be slightly off because of those errors.
So is there anything within the realm of the school committee that we need to be concerned about?
So it's not a simple answer? Because I don't know what the difference is.
I wouldn't say no, that the example that they gave is, you might not even notice any differences, but when it goes to public reporting on DESI and it has things like class size is a, a, a AP course or, you know, how many that we actually ran versus how many it's reported publicly, might not match up. So they said you might not even notice anything, but I wanted Mr. Boyce to share transparently so that when and if, I mean, you know, there was discrepancy, you know, we've, we're, we're kinda waiting to see ourselves. We're trying to look at the raw data on the backend, which they gave to us to see if it's getting pretty, somehow it might be different, but we, we, we really walked out, so.
Okay, fair. So that sounds to me like it could affect the rankings, because if you stop them, it's like that, a class, uh, suspension, AP courses, and the passing of that, all those things, or the rankings. So I assume this means there's no way of going back and changing it now that they've taken the data? Or is it gonna be, if we find these errors, are they gonna be correctable?
So, this year is very different than any year past. There are three questions, no? Normally, yes. DESI is retiring their reporting system this year. This is part of what led to this issue. Their system got ended and literally is shut off. So there is no access to that system anymore. And as of the next day, have launched their new system. So we're starting a whole new set in and out and we have been told that you don't have access to making changes or updating the data. In years past, yes. So I guess it's just an unknown to us at this time. But you will, also if it becomes an issue. Which you could.
Thank you.
Anyway, any other questions for Mr. Boyce?
Thank you. Miss Cruiser, do you wanna give a little school beginning of year update first?
Sure. Alright, so, hello everyone. Uh, we had a great start to school, we welcomed just over seven hundred students into the school, half of which are seventh graders. Um, this year, we started, we brought back a homeroom, but we don't, we're not having a daily homeroom. It's a homeroom that meets only once in a while. And we're using it for purposes to, one example is what we're doing right now. We have six days of meeting in homeroom and extended homeroom in the morning to teach positive behavior intervention and support lessons. Students, it lessons on uh, school-wide expectation. So there are mini lessons, so that's one of the things we're doing in homeroom. So there's a rotation over six days. So two of the days are the school-wide expectation mini lessons in different settings. So students know how, um, to be safe, respectful, responsible in school. So they do like mini lessons in the classroom, or how to be, how to act in the bathroom, in offices, in the cafeteria, in the auditorium, in the hallway, in the gym, and in the library, all the different settings in the school. Um, so that's, those are two of the days in the rotation. Uh, the other days, students are participating in team-building activities and games. And then we also have a little bit of assessment mixed in. Uh, we have a benchmark assessment on map growth and map badger reading is also mixed in the, the six days. Um, starting Friday, fifteenth, is our first regular day schedule, um, where we won't be in homeroom again. So we plan to use homeroom periodically throughout the year to do special events, uh, more PDIS work, et cetera. So other things that we've done so far this year, um, we are focusing on SEL strategies in the classroom. In particular, the SEL three signature practices for developing, um, classroom routines. So starting with a welcoming activity, um, having engaging strategies for develop, for individual and group thinking, um, and then a optimistic and reflective closure. So we're looking at teachers structuring all the class activities like that. We also implemented, we did some consorted practices in community building circle, uh, training this summer. So we've actually implemented that as well. And we've already had the opportunity to run, well, I ran circles with, uh, the staff. But then, um, in the office, we were already able to run circles with different student situations uh, that we were dealing with in the first few days of school. So we plan to continue that implementation. And um, I know many of the teachers are trying to use community building circles in the class as an engaging strategy as well. We gave all our students team-colored lanyards and team-colored pencil pouches and some pencils to get a good start in the school year. Uh, we are implementing a digital hall pass system. So the IDs and lanyards have to do with the digital hall pass system, um, that we will be working on implementing over the next month. So we're just in the beginning stages, we're half on paper passes and half on digital passes. Uh, we're hoping to have that fully implemented by beginning of October. So that's a fun and exciting change. And last, and perhaps the most exciting change, it has to do with students. It may seem minimal, but um, in CIVICs, every year they do a project. And last year, we made a change based on the results of the civic project from the prior year. And this year, we also made a change that based on the civic project results from last year. So a number of our students did a study on our lunch and lunchtimes and how we run lunch. And um, you know, I sat and listened to their different reports and their research. And so with that, we decided to change our lunch flow, um, to provide a maximum of seat time for students to have during lunch. It seemed like a little thing, but it was a big thing. And we really, it came up because of the students and their data and their research last spring. Uh, so essentially, the kids come in now, they're going straight to the lunch line, getting their lunch and then sitting down. We used to have them come, sit down, get organized, and then call sides up. And it took away from their seat time. And they actually researched it and showed the data and took the times of how, you know, the shortest lunch to the longest lunch, et cetera. So, um, and there was a little fear in, in the change, but it's gone so smoothly and I don't know why we didn't do it, et cetera. And so thank you, so this is for all the students who are ninth graders. You know, their, their projects matter, so that's probably the most exciting change. So, a great start so far.
If they buy into it, let's do it also.
But they do, they study topics that mean something to them. And last year, we implemented more vaping education for students, um, which we're continuing to do. And this year, we changed the lunch, uh, flow. So, you know, right from the students' mouths, this is really exciting to do that.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Sounds like a great start, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ms. Boden, High School Principal. So it was a great start to school. So it was a great start to the year. I feel like you already heard a lot about our start to the year, which is fantastic. We welcomed our students in, our faculty were eager to return, classroom setup and greet students. Our students on the first day were wonderful. They were flexible with any little changes that they felt necessary to make. We did tweak a few things for the first day in that we spread out our class meetings a little bit and we ended with our ninth graders. The reason we did that is we allowed our ninth graders actually to be dismissed about two minutes early. And those two minutes were really important because for many of our students, it's their first time navigating where the bus is gonna get them off of high school, where the parent or guardian is gonna pick them up. If they're meeting up with a sibling, where they're gonna go. And so those two minutes where it was just them navigating their way outside before the rest of the school was dismissed made a significant difference. And so we made some tweaks just to improve how we welcome our students coming in. But it was really exciting for me personally. It was great to have students back in the building. I'd been eager to get them back in the building all summer. And students are out and running, they're finding their classes. Huge shout out to our school counselors who are inundated with schedule changes the first week or so with students coming back in and, and wanting to talk about their schedules, wanting to look at, you know, where their interests lie and are there little tweaks they can make? And our counselors are amazing in just, just having a steady flow of traffic coming through. Also to support from a mental health perspective, that transition back into the building after the summer. And so our counselors did a phenomenal job. Huge shout out to our athletic director, Harry Brown, who has just done a phenomenal start to the school year. The fall season is very busy and there isn't a gradual build up to it. One day, he's working on the puzzle piece of the schedule and the next day, hundreds of students are trying out. So it is from zero to sixty very quickly and we had a successful launch to the year. Surround did a fantastic job and we're off and running. So we're excited. Every day, we're tweaking things, we're, we're getting better. I'm getting to meet new students and similarly, our cafeteria is off and running, it's a busy place. So students are navigating that as well. But it's been great and, you know, our faculty has been amazing in navigating the start of the year with, you know, some, some various challenges that, that we weren't anticipating. But everybody really just rolled with it and it's, it's been really nice, so. Any questions?
I give Ms. Bottomley credit too, she's been very patient. She wanted September 5th to be in that library.
She's not long.
And also just seeing both she and Ms. Cruiser's communications, I've been impressed in. Faculty meeting agendas focusing on teaching and learning and it's just been a great, great start.
We're, we're very hopeful that our next faculty meeting will be in the library. We're in the auditorium today, which is a lovely space, but it just has a different feel when you're trying to have a faculty meeting. But we start our faculty meetings with students, they're the first item on the agendas. We have student presentations, so today it was a presentation on our new student orientation and some of the takeaways that our student leaders had for our incoming ninth graders. And just, you know, asking our faculty to be patient with our incoming ninth graders as they're navigating the school, which is very powerful coming from students and much more powerful than anything I can say. So that was a great, that was a great afternoon today as well. Back, back in action.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So. One question, right into, what's the most positive thing you've heard and what's the most negative thing you've heard so far from the students or bands or anybody else?
Great questions. So I would say our class meetings, the first day are, that's two such principles meeting with students. When they were conducting the class meetings with the, the students, they started by sharing a little bit about who they are. They showed a few different pictures, just kind of humanized them a little bit. And the feedback coming out from students was that it just felt different, the class meetings felt different. They felt like they had a little bit more of a sense of who the administrators were. And so hearing that positive feedback that they felt like they were starting to know the administrators in the school, I'd say that was the most positive. And that was again, these small little tweaks that we made that, that ended up having a big impact. So just hearing students speak positively of getting to know administrators in the building. So that to me was wonderful. Kind of, it was pretty sweaty last week. We were not shower treated by the end of the day, so I'd say that. And that we have no control over it. People did very well and, and were very anxious about it.
Thank you so much.
Here I ask, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
A little bit smelly, I think.
Yeah, it's a, it's something I discussed with a few staff and students. It's more work than just throwing the window AC in. However, it's something that I definitely thought about, especially if in the spring, it's a really hot spring. The principals were great about sharing with staff which limited open spaces have AC, like the library and the auditorium, for example, and cycling a lot of classes through. But it was hot, it's tough on some other local districts to do an early release. My kids district had an early release and it was not as hot as here. But at the same time, I also spoke to the three elementary superintendents and we would make this type of decision in unity. But, but the staff and the kids did great bearing, you know, the, the heat, the humidity, which still is the elements.
All right, I just, I want to thank Ms. Bottomley, Ms. Cruiser, Mr. Brown, nice to see you here this evening. Of course, Mr. Voice and Ms. Roy, thank you all for taking your time this evening and coming and sharing that. Just a quick side comment, I had the privilege of representing this committee in opening morning and spent about a half an hour just out there mingling and eating your delicious treats that you had out there. But there was a definite sense of enthusiasm that was in that group that you don't always feel. You know, they're coming back from the summer and it's, it's always a challenge, but it was a delight to be able to spend some time with so many of your staff. It's just, you've got a great group, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so next to this section of your agenda, superintendent goals, you do vote to approve. Or if you wanna give any feedback, you could vote to approve at a future meeting. But it's in your package, it just briefly go over a draft goals. Goal one, which is a district improvement goal, effective entry and direction setting. By the spring of 2024, we'll have agreement from stakeholder groups about our most critical needs, strategies and goals to address the, the needs and measures used to assess progress. So in a nutshell, goal one, I'll have, I've already shared my entry plan. I'll do a report of entry fundings late winter, early spring. And then by June, we'll have new district improvement goals for a new district strategic plan. Goal two, again, a district improvement goal. This is a combination of Ms. Bottomley at the high school especially is doing more vision of a graduate work. And also I put in innovative programming, maybe some additional pathways or early college opportunities, particularly at the high school level. You know, Ms. Bottomley and I are still new, but some goals tied into here would be if we could offer more secondary, expose more secondary students to relevant learning experiences. Down the line, we'd love to do increased internships, maybe for juniors or seniors in the, in the community. More dual enrollment opportunities, so by the end of the year, partnering with local colleges and universities to have additional opportunities for students to earn college credit while at KP High School. Also additional pathways, programs. So kids that might wanna specialize in a certain area and we're, I'm still learning myself. So these, this school is a little bit ambitious, but if you, it might turn into a multi-year, a two or three year goal. But this is something that is, is there as another district improvement goal, innovative specialized programming. Goal three, student learning goal, just increasing, just my visibility and working with the district leadership team to improve teaching and learning. Immersing myself in the KP community, also facilitating and participating with our leadership team in instructional rounds to observe classroom techniques, analyze curriculum, identify priorities and set goals for future student improvement. Part of this, you know, besides attending, you know, sports or community events is observing, you know, just different, different classroom instructional practices, teaching and learning, doing walkthroughs, analyzing student assessment results, setting measurable goals for next year and beyond. Working with our leadership team to incorporate best practices related to student engagement, assessment and lesson design, promoting culture of inclusiveness and belonging. Finally, goal four, my own learning and leading, being a lifelong learner. Even though in 2009, when I earned my doctorate, I said, I'm never gonna take another class again. I, I continue to engage in learning. It's something that I think most educators like to learn and share what they learn. So I'll participate in continued professional development, communicate with other superintendents and job alikes, attend various superintendent conferences, learning strategies, presenting at conferences, working with the tri-county superintendent, superintendent roundtable group. That's a group of about 25 superintendents from local districts where we meet monthly and bi-monthly. Also collaborating monthly with the North Fork, Plainville and Rhythm Elementary superintendents. We get along great, we've already met a few times. Also participating in the BIKO collaborative board meetings, board meetings. Besides that, I look to participate in professional development around ESL and SDI, sheltered English immersion endorsement and PD related to working with students with disabilities and instruction students with different learning styles. So there's, there's detail in here about benchmarks, we need to try to meet these goals as we go out through the course of the year. We talked the last meeting about our work with the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, which is composed of three or four of you. So from here, once you approve my goals or provide, provide feedback and prove them, I would reach out to the subcommittee to start to talk about my superintendent evaluation process. Part of my evaluation process at the end of the year, we talked about doing it earlier in March before the school committee elections and turnover, is assessing these goals. However, this is just part of it. The other part is assessing, evaluating me on the four standards. So I'll share that with the subcommittee and the full committee in the future, but there's four standards, just like principals evaluate teachers on four standards that you would evaluate with me as well. So I'm looking for feedback on these goals. I'm happy to answer questions to the best of my ability and subsequently a motion and approval of these goals. Or it can be done at a future meeting if you, you know, have feedback and you don't make tweaks. Any questions, comments?
If I may ask one, I'm sorry, if you, if I may ask one, if you, I'm just a softball question and, I mean, King Philip, our students mainly go to college. That's where our students go, that's what we're gearing them towards. And we have feeder high schools of tri-county, where else, as you, for instance. I want to make sure that we make our students feel comfortable that they don't have to go to college, that if they go to King Philip, they can also go into one of the trades as well. So I just want to make sure that as we emphasize the college and everything else, that we are also embracing those who don't.
We try. Yeah, yeah. Last year, we had a whole event dedicated to students that were maybe not interested in going out to college and were interested in career after high school. And it was very well attended. I think we're looking to do the same thing again this year as part of our practice. But it is with the intention to make kids feel comfortable, while we do encourage kids to go on to college and to reach for an opportunity. To also recognize that there are, after high school, with a King Philip high school degree, we have an ability to support kids in their future plans, like providing them with, like we brought all of the, the trade schools here. We, like we were able to bring some tri-county representatives. We brought in adults from different vocational, like the Peterson School and so on and so forth, so.
And if you look at goal two, trying to, when I mentioned pathways or career exploration, ideally down the line, internships for students that could earn credit at the high school while they're with, as an apprentice or with someone in the community. So if someone, you know, is interested in starting a career, they have an opportunity to explore that before college or. So that is embedded in goal two. Now, we're never gonna be able, a, a program that tri-county has, for example, that is well established, we're not gonna compete with or replicate that. But there might be other pathways or that we could begin to offer. Part of the benchmarks here is looking at our, you know, high school program of studies. So with Ms. Bottomley, you know, by the spring, probably coming before you would be some, you know, new classes for next year. And that, you know, some of them might be, you know, with college prep related, but others might be career exploration related. So I tried to incorporate that in goal two and I think that's a multi-year one that'll end up taking a few years to, to get there. But gee, I completely agree with you. And, you know, we, we can't just be, expect all students that graduate from, from KP are going to college, although the majority do. Things are changing and it's perfectly fine if a high school student graduate does not go to college and pursues a career and will help their students as well.
We had at that event last spring, several employers that came.
Yes.
Ready to interview and to hire students that.
Dr. Wilson, Dr. Dray, thank you very much. Appreciate that. I just want to represent those who don't do it.
Absolutely.
That we have enough to do.
And a pathway for them as well.
Two are very important.
I have a process question. What's the best way to give feedback on, on the goals to Dr. Dray? Email, a conversation, what would be appropriate?
I think, you know, these goals are fluid, you know, so if, you know, the committee could approve them tonight and then I could still, you could still email the feedback around a particular area and that could still be a focus of mine. A conversation would be great, but I would ask for an email to kind of document, you know, specifically. So I think that, that would be great because I, you know, if you want, you could, if, if you wanted to, through Mr. Lehman as the chair, you could email him feedback and he could get it to me. But I think that I could handle the feedback from multiple committee members towards refining my goals too. If he didn't wanna approve them tonight, I could, I could get feedback in the next week, tweak them and then put it forth for the next committee meeting as well, so. Either way.
Yeah, I would just add that if anyone has feedback of that nature, do not go through me. Not, you know, I, I don't mind a bit, but I do think that's something that should go direct to Dr. Dray and you should all feel comfortable in doing that.
Thank you. And we've had, we seem to be in a pattern of having a first read and then time to digest and then approval. I would advocate that we use that process just because it's good to hear, even though you sent it ahead of time and that's helpful for sure. It's good to hear you talk about them, hear what other people are asking and I imagine, okay, then there's a little time to maybe send a note and then file for the next meeting.
Sure.
Does that sound?
Sure.
Is that a pleasure to the committee? Do you defer this until the next meeting for approval? And if anyone has any feedback or comments, they will get them directly to Dr. Dray?
If you could get.
Should you, what's, I'll say, and then if you get a chance, obviously you can tweak or whatever you feel appropriate with the feedback you have and get them out to a sub-ends. But we do need to approve these. So if we can commit to getting this done at the next meeting, that would be acceptable to everybody.
Once they're approved, I'd want to share that with the principals and the leadership team because then they're gonna work on their goals to make. Typically, they're due in mid-October and, but yeah, if I could ask, anyone has feedback, get it to me by the end of the week. I'll then have the weekend, that and up until next Wednesday to get it, to miss edit the next packet for the 25th and then we'll have, we'll see.
So we will plan to take action on that school committee meeting. We do get to get these done again, we're. And on that topic, we have to work on our goals as well. So once we approve Dr. Dray's rules, because I was clearly having to be in sync with Dr. Dray's, keep in mind that that is a project we need to get working on really quickly after next meeting, so. We're gonna lose sight of that. Thanks, thank you.
So officially, we will call this a first read. This will officially be a first read and then I'm.
This will officially be a first read, and then our next meeting will be.
Correct. Yep.
Is there a meeting scheduled yet for, someone scheduling for the superintendent evaluation
Each committee is responsible for establishing a long timeline with the exception of finance, which is under the discretion of Mr. Azar when he needs our timing because of the requirements of filing the budget, but each of you have, everyone's comfortable with their committee assignments?
Who is the chair of that?
We often don't have chairs.
I'm sorry?
We often don't have a chair.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have, it's sort of just the ad hoc.
There never has been a formal timeframe for our committees to work. It's up to you as a collective group for, some of them are different. I mean, DEI for, let me just finish this, and then I will be. DEI is where we had other parties involved, and so there was necessary to coordinate those, and we sort of had those as a calendar item on a regular basis. Policy is really within your own group. You can decide to hold your meetings whenever you choose. That's entirely up to you, your discretion, I believe it's Eric and you, Greg, and Joe.
That's not really how things operated last year. I've just made it, Paul called all meetings. So that, I think, there's reason I'm going to miss out.
I did not know that. I have the habit, any of us calling you.
So if there's a, if there's, I agree, and it's because of that, first, I just want to say kudos to the team, to the, to the, you know, we get in the school, new superintendent, new high school principal, and they're all familiar, and that's amazing, and I just think that, that's great. Yeah, I just think we should know that, so.
Thank you. And to, and so your, to respond to what you said, I'm happy to, what I was going to say is, I'm hearing, and later on, unfinished business, there's an agenda item where we're talking about the policy Subcommittee meeting, I'm happy to facilitate that. I'm hearing kind of a request for the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee meeting, so I'm happy to email, I think it's the four of you now, yourself and everyone else on that, and then we'll set up a meeting for next week, a week after that, too. I'm hearing the request for that, so.
Either, and I don't, I don't think that needs to be on you, but if there's no committee chair that's leading that, then I think it falls.
Sure.
I think we have been in the habit of relying on the superintendent to do that, that's been my experience at least. Is there a chair of that committee?
So.
You would like that within the committee?
Okay.
You would do that.
So Mark, I agree, that we have several committees with, it's like, there's a leadership for any, any form of whatever, so how do we get together and say, "Hey, we want to meet and do this?" So I really think that whoever's on the committee should communicate with those others and say, "Hey, let's get together and let's call a meeting and let's do this."
I think if you communicate with the others and at least two out of three of you want to meet, let me know, and I'll have Miss Padgett schedule a meeting with the Subcommittee and myself.
But at the same time, do we want a chair of each committee, or do we want to just be a committee of each equals? What's our framework? What's our process?
Yeah, to Mark's point. And I kind of think, Jim, that rests with you maybe of directing the committee about how you should structure.
Well, I think it really rests with the individual committees. I mean, I have a bias, and I think that you should all be equal and participate in an equal basis if no one person should run that meeting. You're almost always going to have someone for administration in long meetings. And so if you think, I was not aware that Paul went on scheduling, so I'm a little bit of a learning curve as well, as to some of the past practice, so, but if you think that's a good process, I just hate to put, you know.
No, I'm not advocating.
I'm not going to return to do it. A whole bunch of folks with additional work.
One or six committees is great. We, I would ask you to do five or six committees to off the back, because that's just.
If a committee wants to establish a lead person, call it a chair if you will, to sort of coordinate meetings, you have really right to do that. You know, it's within your own group to do that. Personally, I always enjoy working more as an equal basis, if either the superintendent or just someone ad hoc. Mark, I know in DEI, you coordinated a meeting with us one time when the three of us got together. That's perfectly appropriate, good thing to do.
My feeling is that there should be a leader on each Subcommittee, not to direct what the agenda is or anything else, but to say, "Hey, we need to make a mess, and here's the agenda." If nobody else will put together that agenda. But that's, that's my.
I think, I think we're saying the same thing. The right answer is you guys decide.
Yeah, exactly.
Within your own meeting. If you think you'd like a lead, it'll lead, or if you don't, it's okay.
So in this case, you guys get it for at least the first time, any support you can give. I think, I think we should, I would advocate that we get an email to the four of us so that we could get a meeting with you, and then maybe at that meeting we'll have someone.
Sure.
Say more leadership.
And after tonight, with the next week, I'll have Miss Padgett reach out to the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee and the Policy Subcommittee, because that's something else to, that's on care, that's on.
Thank you. The one exception to this would be the Finance Committee, just so we all know, that is driven by a very specific calendar, ours will coordinate those meetings.
And then.
It's scheduled for the year.
And then, of course, it's not.
The law is correct.
I remember.
Uh, yeah, I think so.
They're whole. And there's no chair of that?
No. There is none.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we've agreed that it'll be an actual item at our next meeting for superintendent's goals and feedback will be given and all that, great. Let's see, unfinished business. We do have one issue regarding policy. Phil, then you want to give us some background?
Sure, so just, and this is what I was saying, the Policy Subcommittee, you would meet in your packet, it says Legal Review of Public Participation as School Committee Policy. We did have Legal Counsel review based on state guidance, slight changes in state guidance around public participation. I asked him what would be your recommended language change, so if you look in your packet, highlighted in red is his suggested, which is just towards the end of the policy. So I was going to, going to say, if we make it official, have a Policy Subcommittee meeting, talk about, you know, whether or not to enact those changes recommended by legal. If so, the Policy Subcommittee would recommend to bring it back to the Full Committee for a vote in the change in that public participation as School Committee Policy.
And these are not major changes, these are, these are minor changes, but there is one interesting change.
Where, where in our process documents does it say that this has to go to the Policy Committee? I don't know, I'm not sure. I don't know if that's a recommended.
It would be in your school committee policy stuff.
It's in our school committee policies?
It's in the reference. That this has to go, because this is so simple, it doesn't necessarily need to weave a mock, go down, go up.
Well, based on, based on some rather interesting conversations I've had this week, and with Council, and some feedback I've had with Council, I think that it is in our best interest to have, even though it's minor in nature, go through the policy process and then come up to the formal vote. I can send you an email that I received from Council that will sort of reinforce that need to do that.
Is he going to existing documentation work, like, in our policies, is he here to set that? I think, I think, but I'd have to check, and we can share this with the committee. Do you want to?
Yeah, I read that four years ago, and my mind reminds me of this. I think that is the case, but part of what we were discussing with Council is practice is also considered part of policy, and that has been our past practice. And so we have always sifted those pieces of information through the Policy Committee, reviewed by the Full Committee, recommendations, what have you. It could be several meetings, we've had a number of those over the years. And let me forward you the email, that I think will give you some comfort, that will, I think you'll feel more comfortable in that we just go through the Policy Committee process so that it is viewed by a Subcommittee, brought forward to the Full Committee, then go back to the Subcommittee. I think the process is entirely up to us, but it starts with the Policy Subcommittee. It's been, I can't share more because it's not on an agenda item to go through this specific issues that I'm talking about. This is, the issue that's on here is specific, but let's stick with the Policy Subcommittee for now, and I'll provide you the detailed backup on that.
Okay.
Thank, thank you for your understanding.
So if we're doing that, why do we have the policy come up first at all, and we focus the Subcommittee? What do you think?
Well, in this case, it's a recommendation from Council. Yeah, so it's a little different. It has to start with Council. So there's no harm in the Full Committee getting that information. We can't act on it, we're asking the Subcommittee to review it, make a recommendation, and at which time we will act. It's more process. To put Mark's comments briefly, incorrectly, so it's process.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking about the process of, if we come up with any policies, for example, at what, does that go like this, where it comes to the whole School Committee, then go to the Policy Subcommittee, and then come back? Or what is the process?
Well, this, this I did learn, and the Policy Subcommittee has the ability to review any existing School Committee policy, and so chooses to do so. You don't need the permission of this committee to do that. So as you're meeting as a group, you can look at any one of our policies and say, "We think we would like to recommend the following changes," or whatever you might choose, and it comes back to the Full Committee, probably for a first reading, discussion, back, whatever. The committee will decide the direction it takes. But you have that right. So you can look at all of our policies as a Subcommittee. I know my first year on the Board, four years ago, while some of you were here, and I know Bruce sure, the Policy Subcommittee did in fact, on its own, locate a particular policy, came up with recommendations, and we accepted those recommendations. So it is your privilege to do that.
So what policies can the committee as a whole refer to the Policy Committee to come back to our school committee policy?
Anything, anything, Bruce would be my guest. I mean, you have, if you, if one of you feels one of our policies is flawed, for whatever reason, and you would like to have it looked at, I would say the process is that you act, recommend it, be viewed by the Policy Subcommittee, let them review it, and make their recommendations back to the committee, and provide your feedback. You know, explain to them why you think that should be, that would be my way.
So do we need an agenda item in order to do that, or may I make a recommendation or multiple recommendations tonight?
You're going to make this committee go to work tomorrow, I guess.
Yes.
I would say, I would say you do not need a, taking a formal vote to recommend a policy to be reviewed is our requirement.
Okay. So it does not actually have the agenda either?
To refer a policy?
Yes.
To the committee? No, does not.
It'd just be a conversation.
Okay, I, I mean, there are several things on my mind that I want the Policy Committee to consider and come back to the Full Committee on. And it mainly revolves around child safety, which, which is essentially, how do we protect our girls from the boys being able to have, to go into girls' bathrooms, and they're longer than anybody else.
Yeah, I, I think we're getting way off track on what the agenda item is.
Well, no, it's a policy. I want to make sure that our girls are safe from.
That policy is.
From the transgender.
I have to stop it first. That policy is not on the agenda. If you're talking about, if you're talking about process.
That's what I'm asking. Does it, does it need to be on the agenda in order to talk about this, or does it need to be referred to the Policy Committee?
If you have a policy, you want to refer to the Subcommittee, do that. You're absolutely privileged to do that, if you want to say, "Would you take a look at this?" What we cannot do this evening is reference specific policies to be given back to the Policy Committee that is not on the agenda as an act for discussion. So, just ask me, not to reference specific policies.
So Bruce is supposed to come to grade myself and Eric?
Correct.
After that?
Or through the superintendent, if you prefer.
Okay, after the meeting. Okay, that's all I'm asking, is what is the process? That's all, that's all I'm asking.
I'm on the Policy Subcommittee at Plainville, and we also, you know, we've gone through our policies over the years, but we asked the Superintendent, was there any policies that they, the others, would look at a little closer? And then we also asked the Special Ed Director and the Principals, because there are some that are, he got pretty outdated, and then we, of course, took what the MASC regulations are, and we lined them up, and we looked at our language based off the MASC. So people could just contact me and say, "Hey, look, can you just take a look at this one and there's a..."
That's, that's all I'm looking for, is I'm looking for some schools taking stuff, so I'll take it offline, and we'll do it that way. But that's all I'm looking for, is what was the, was the process that we go through to get a new policy, you know, considered?
So anyone that has any recommendations or considerations of policies, refer them to the Policy Committee, and I'm sure that, it sounds like they're going to be busy. Which is a fact. Nothing wrong with it. I don't know of any unfinished business to discuss. New business handled? Report to Subcommittees. Ms. Witt is not with us, Ms. Sharp?
We had to move our school committee, so we are actually meeting on the 19th, Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m. It will be at the Wood School, we typically meet at the Town Hall, but because we moved the day, we have to work around Wednesday, so we will be at the Wood School. Just to add, just as Dr. Delay had talked about and Ms. Moy, our Plainville team also went out to the shelters and also met with the families. Our superintendent will be giving a communication out to the parents by Thursday about what is occurring and how many students and whatnot. I don't want to jump in front of her to do that, that would be what she will be doing later this week. And in the same day, we are also looking at enrolling the students and having them start by the end of the week. So it's kind of where we are right now in Plainville, and after our meeting on the 19th, we'll draw a board.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments? Ms. Kim?
I have no updates this time. Our meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00.
We've timed it perfectly.
Happy rhythm days, by the way.
I don't know of any late communications, anyone? Miss Padgett, I'm sure you're aware of, report to any special committees. Dr. Delay, any additional information you'd like to share?
That's it.
I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you.